Wow. Thank you, Brian. All right. Well, welcome, everyone, to this October 9, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation for Down Syndrome Awareness Month, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And anybody who -- I see we have a large crowd tonight, and I'm pretty sure this is what it's for, not for everything that's going to happen beyond this. If you guys want to come forward for the proclamation, you are more than welcome.
So proclamation for Down Syndrome Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurred chromosomal disorder and is the leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the United States, and whereas approximately one in every 700 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States, with approximately 85 of those annual births occurring here in Alabama. Whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our communities. And whereas yet despite significant increases in lifespan and intellectual opportunities over the past decade, there is still much work to be done regarding the rights to equality, inclusion, education, medical care, research, employment, and support for people with Down Syndrome. And whereas the city of Homewood encourages all citizens to work together to celebrate the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome, and remember to appreciate and regard every individual with dignity as a valued member of our community. And whereas through public awareness, the city of Homewood supports the initiatives of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services and are valued by society, and can lead fulfilling and productive lives in our community. Now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the city of Homewood, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in support of individuals with Down Syndrome, as well as their families, advocates, researchers, and medical professionals. I encourage all Homewood citizens to work together to promote respect and inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome, and to celebrate their accomplishments and contributions.
You guys can take a picture.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ready? One, two, three. Oh my goodness. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. There you go.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. So with that proclamation done, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Counselor Sims, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
God, today, first, we'd just like to say a prayer for peace. And also, we would like to say a prayer as we recognize today as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We take a moment to remember the Native brothers and sisters who were the first peoples of these lands, Creek, Chickasaw, Choctaw, and Cherokee of inhabited Alabama for centuries. These, the Creek or Muskogee people originally lived where we are today in Homewood. We'd like to honor them, thank God for them, and pray for them. God, thank you for the Muskogee people. We recognize that it is a good gift that we can come and meet on their lands. Forgive us, those of us who are immigrants too, and settlers in this country, so often forgetting that we are guests on the First Nations people of North America. Please help us to live on these lands with respect. We pray for the Muskogee people today. May they have unity in their tribe. May their remaining sacred lands be honored and protected. May you bless their efforts to revitalize their language and culture. May all the Muskogee people know that they are loved by a good and powerful God. Creator of every tribe, nation, and tongue, may you richly bless the Muskogee people. Amen.
If everyone will face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton.
Here.
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 Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Smith.
Nels.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Hardin.
Here.
All right. So we've got 10 present tonight. Next on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of September 25, 2023. Those have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second to discuss the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same. There are a motion from Mr. Wolverton.
Second.
Second from Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved 10 to 0. Next, we have ward vacancies. We had a Ward 4 Historic Preservation Commission position closed today without any applicant, so we will reopen that one to November 27 at 4:30. We also need to open a Ward 5 Library position. We've got a term expiring with, I think, an incumbent that probably, that I understand wants to reapply, so we will open that one until October 23 at 4:30 p.m. All right, we have one addition to the agenda tonight. It's an addition to Old Business Agenda. It's an item that's already been in committee. It's 02-08-23, bid opening held on October 2 for revised paving project, and we'll add that to Old Business. So with that one addition, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to 0. There's nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll start with Old Business and that added item, 02-08-23, bid opening held on October 2 for revised paving project, and we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met October the 2nd, and the initial report was to carry this over, but I would like to make a motion from the floor. There were no bids received, so the action that I feel like we should have taken at that point was to reset, have another bid opening date for October 30 at 4:31, with bids being required as a deadline of October 30 at 4:30. So I'd like to make that motion from the floor.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Waltonie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0, and we will reset that bid opening. All right. Next item, 11-09-23, request to surplus various municipal items, brought to us by Gordon James, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this ordinance.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare certain property as surplus. Hereby established and declared that the following described personal property of the city of Homewood is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, and therefore declared surplus property. The property is a 2010 Crown Victoria, one-use air compressor, one electric main lift, approximately 92 black fence panels, and approximately 157-foot fence post. Section 2, that the mayor and clerk has authorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments from council? If not, then I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Hardin, second from Ms. Nels, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Walton.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Hardin.
Yes.
President White.
Yes. So that is 10 to 0, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Waltonie, second from Ms. Here, and another roll call vote, please,
Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Walton.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Hardin.
Here, yes.
President White.
Yes. All right. So that passes 10 to 0, and will be ordinance 2876. Next item, 12-09-23, request to add amendment to Cohaba Solid Waste Contract to allow for fuel rebate, brought to us by Berkeley Squires and J.J. Bischoff, and we'll have another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0, and will be Resolution 23147. Next item, 14-08-23, request to consider, request for consideration of traffic signage at the intersection of Lucerne Boulevard and Parkway Drive, brought to us by Counselor Sims, and we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltonie.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the item. The motion was made by Counselor Nels and seconded by Counselor Hardin.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us another first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide for penalties for the violation thereof. Be ordained as follows. Section 1, every person operating a motor vehicle traveling on or along the northbound lane of Parkway Drive on the eastly side of the traffic island located at intersection Parkway Drive and Lucerne Boulevard identified Exhibit 1 is, shall cause a motor vehicle to yield to traffic traveling on or along Lucerne Boulevard. Section 2, to every person operating a motor vehicle traveling along the southbound lane of Parkway Drive on the east side of the traffic island located at intersection Parkway Drive and Lucerne Boulevard is identified Exhibit 1, shall cause a motor vehicle to yield to traffic traveling on or along Parkway Drive. Section 3, to every person operating a motor vehicle traveling on or along the northbound lane of Parkway Drive on the westly side of the traffic island is identified Exhibit 1, shall cause a motor vehicle to yield to traffic traveling on or along Lucerne Boulevard. Section 4, to no person, firm, or corporation shall park within 30 feet of the intersection of the yield sign located on Parkway Drive is identified Exhibit 1. Section 6, to no person shall park within 30 feet of the yield sign located on Parkway Drive is identified Exhibit 1. Section 7, to violation of any section of this ordinance will constitute a misdemeanor and be punished as provided in Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 8, to the chief of police or his designated shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate markings, yield signs at the intersections in places described in Section 1 through 6, and in Exhibit 1 of the ordinance. Section 9, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approved by the mayor, is otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? If not, then I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Sims, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Walton.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Hardin.
Yes.
President White.
Yes. All right. So that's 10 to 0, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Waltonie, second from Ms. Nels, second from Ms. Nels, and another
roll call vote, please.
Counselor Walton.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Hardin.
Yes.
President White.
Yes. All right. So that is 10 to 0, and will be ordinance 2877. Next item, 07-09-23, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances at 160 State Farm Parkway, brought to us by the Drury Inn and Wyatt Pugh, and we'll start with a report from Special Issues, which I believe Ms. Andrews is reporting out?
Yes. That's my array of minutes up here. Let's see, we met last week, Special Issues, we met last week, and we voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by myself.
All right. Thank you very much. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. You see, Mr. Smith is at the podium.
Filling in for Mr. Pugh. There are three variants requests for this sign. The first one is on the marquee. It's considered a marquee sign permitting lettering 36 inches tall. The ordinance limits the height to 24 inches in the Wildwood Center District. So this is what the marquee sign looks like on the storefront, and it meets the total signage square footage.
All right. So that's just a height variance?
That is the first variance, yes, for the lettering height.
Okay. And then what's the next one?
The other two, Brian, these have to do with the, to permit a wall sign, these are, this is considered a wall sign in a location other than the storefront, which is variance number three, so this is on the side of the building, and then also to allow for that sign to be up to 4 feet 6 inches tall, because the maximum limit is 3 feet.
So we've got a placement and a two-height variance.
That's right.
All right. Okay. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? Come on up, and if you will, just sign in up at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Graham Rup. I'm with Drury Development Corporation out of St. Louis, Missouri. We own the 138-room Drury Inn and Suites. We are currently, well, I shouldn't say currently, actually upcoming, starting next week, we will begin an interior and exterior renovation, which will be a significant reinvestment into the property, and along with that, we are intending on updating our sign package to our new logo, and would appreciate if you guys could approve these three variances so we can get on our way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm here for questions as well.
I'm going to ask for questions, just a second. Let me see, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So the change is like y'all did, like a new branding for the logo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that changed the size, like for all of them?
It was, so most people would typically say that they can't even tell that there's a difference. Like, if you asked my mom, she would have no idea, but it is a little bit different. It's a little bit more vertical. The D we have increased to where if you look at the R-U-R-Y, it will be a little bit smaller. So in the variance where we're getting the size for a 4'6", that's going to be the only let, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Exactly. So everything else will be significantly smaller.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Waltonie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 10 to 0, and will be Resolution 23148. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
All right. Next item, 15-09-23, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 2713 18th Place South, brought to us by Dunn Real Estate and David Brandt of Fravort and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing, Mr. Kendrick, just make sure I'm okay, I can set that for our next meeting, correct?
Yes.
On the 23rd?
Yes.
So we'll set that for October 23 at 6 p.m. All right. Next item, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 169 State Farm Parkway, Suite 101, brought to us by Stanton Optical Art, M.E. Signs Pro LLC, and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that public hearing for October 23 at 6 p.m. All right. I'm going to take the next two items, I'm going to, we're going to do them out of order. So we'll start with 09-09-23, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone 85 Bagby Drive from C1 to MXD. The applicant is John Chapman, and 85 Capital Partners LLC, to facilitate an expansion of the adjacent Magic City Acceptance Academy through the rehabilitation of an existing office building to accommodate additional educational activities and teaching space, as well as office space for various mental health and life services organizations. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 7, 1 to 1, favorable recommendation. We will start with a report, this comes from Planning and Development, correct? Yeah. We'll start with a report from Planning and Development.
All right. The Committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm not sure who wants to start for the group, but feel free to come on up.
Randall Minor, 130 Stratford Circle, representing the property owner. There's two applications here, as John Chapman, the principal of the property owners for both of those applications, will explain. We've requested that they go out of order, just because I think it will make more sense, and we're going to give a brief presentation for this one, and then obviously answer questions, and then there'll be a separate presentation that we'll do for the other item. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Chapman?
Thank you. Good evening. John Chapman with Ferris Properties, 240 Arlington Avenue, 35205, here in Birmingham. As I mentioned, we're a Birmingham-based company. We're a diversified real estate firm. We operate currently in the states of Alabama and Mississippi. If you look at the projects we're involved with, primarily, we're a multifamily shop, so we do a lot of apartments as far as a percentage of our total portfolio. Additionally, we do some commercial projects, and more recently, within the past five or six years, we've become involved in the community impact space, and that's been a very rewarding space for us. A local kind of noteworthy project that operates in that world would have been our redevelopment of the old Dewberry Engraving Building down on Fifth Avenue South in Birmingham, that's now home to the 1917 clinic that's operated as the specialty clinic of UAB. World-renowned, fantastic group. It's been a great experience for us, and that's really what's led to us being before you a few years ago in asking for our rezoning of a formerly C1 property on Bagby Drive, 75 Bagby Drive, to mixed use that's now home to the Magic City Acceptance Academy. So it's when those community impact pieces and the multifamily impact pieces collide is very exciting, and so one of the projects we'll speak to tonight is on that front. Again, we've referenced, there'll be two projects, I understand, we're now before you for the 85 Bagby piece. I just want to do my setup for both, and then we'll get specifics on those. The two projects are similar schedules, similar locations, but they are very different applications, although they do overlap. Both of the projects are intended to provide uplift and support for persons who are marginally marginalized in our community, and folks who can benefit greatly from a supportive environment and from an ecosystem that we're hoping to create on Bagby, or really continue, I should say. These people, these persons in the communities we're going to speak to are both local to us, and I think it was great to see the proclamation this evening. I think that was a great setup, but they're also from other surrounding counties, regions, and beyond, and Karen can speak to that when she's at the podium later this evening. As I spoke at the Planning Commission, and really to anyone who will listen to me as it relates to Bagby Drive and our experience on Bagby Drive, I think it's of utmost importance that I say publicly again, we would not be here this evening if it were not for the redevelopment of the Homewood Police Department, the Public Safety Center, and it's that vision and that forward-thinking-ness on the city's behalf that really, you know, solidifies our belief in the location. Although this property and these projects we'll speak tonight have been blighted for lots of years, it's a fantastic pocket, and again, without the city's vision on that front, I don't think we would be here. Relative to our development team, we're very fortunate to have put together a fantastic team, all of which are local participants, and I think they're known commodities to the city. CCR Architecture is working with us for 85 Bagby Project. KPS Group is working with us for our 5565 Bagby Project. Brasfield and Gorey has been our construction partner of choice as we developed the first Magic City Acceptance Academy at 75 Bagby Drive, and we intend to use those folks again. Dave Irich is our landscape architect of record on the projects, and Shoal Engineering is record, I'm sorry, is our civil engineer of record for both projects. Specific to the 85 Bagby piece, that again, we're speaking to you now, this is an expansion of 75 Bagby, which formerly was a blighted office structure in very similar physical condition to all of the buildings we'll speak to tonight. What we're seeking related to our rezoning of mixed use is for the school's expansion. We've got an illustration here on screen tonight. I'm going to ask Scott Burnett with CCR Architects to come and speak to the physical redevelopment plan for the building, and then I'll ask Karen Musgrove to come speak to us on behalf of the school operation itself.
I'm Scott Burnett with CCR Architecture and Interiors. And the image I was going to talk to went away. That one's, okay. We don't talk very well without pictures of buildings. It's impossible for us. So in the image you see on screen, the top building is the existing Magic City Acceptance Academy, just to get you oriented, and then the building further down the hill is 85 Bagby Drive. And so we realized there was a way to connect the pedestrian, the students, between the original building and the new building by creating a covered crosswalk and then a bridge that elevates you above the parking lot and takes those kids straight into the second floor of 85 Bagby Drive. So that walk gives those students access to the top two floors of the building and leaves the lower floor available for mixed use, which is the plan, and the reason for that zoning is to allow for the lowest floor to be office space.
Karen Musgrove. I'm the CEO of the Magic City Acceptance Academy. So just to kind of give you all a heads up on an update on where we are, we are firmly settled into year three. We have 347 kids at the school, 6th through 12th grade. 61%, 60% are at, are at free reduced lunch. Around 32% are Latina or Latinx, and so they're doing great and they're thriving, and so our goal is to expand into this new space, and that will put us at around 550 to 600 kids, still 6th through 12th. We might go to 5th grade, but not really sure yet. And our goal into this space is to add a band room, because right now, we don't really have a really good band room, and also a theater, a black box space, and then additional classrooms, and then more specifically, mental health space. So we will be able to do more mental health opportunities with the kids, and then also to the surrounding area, that could be family counseling, individual counseling, or telecounseling and telehealth as well. So it's just an expansion of what we're doing at the school.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else that's here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would like to just highlight what I said at the Planning Commission, which is, and also to highlight what John pointed out about the redevelopment in West Homewood, that these were originally four very unloved buildings that were, two of which were, we were about to condemn this summer, and the fact that we've able, we have, we, the city, you, the school, the academy, has been able to breathe life into that campus, create something that was not there at all before, and grow and thrive in that space is just a wonderful success story, and it's everything that any city should ask for. So those are my comments.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us a first reading, please.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further regulate and amend ordinance 1602 entitled zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Homewood, whereas the Planning Commission is favorably recommend that the property described herein be rezoned from its current zoning classification C1 office building district to the city's MXD mixed-use district, whereas the city council has set the public hearing to be October 9, 2023, at 6 o'clock p.m. Now therefore be ordained by the city council as follows, that the following described property, described in Exhibit A, which is the legal description, known as 85 Bagby Drive, parcel ID 200014200. known as 85 Bagby Drive, parcel ID 2000142004007, is hereby rezoned from the city's current zoning classification C1 to the MXD zoning district pursuant to a development plan attached as Exhibit B. Section 2, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance by the city council and approved by the mayor, that the restrictions applicable to MXD zoning district is set out in this ordinance and Ordinance 1602, previously adopted by the city, that final development plan attached as Exhibit B and a proffer made by the applicant, that the permitted uses of the property shall be limited to facilitate an expansion of the adjacent Magic City Acceptance Academy through the rehabilitation of existing office building to accommodate additional educational activities and teaching spaces as well as an office space for various mental health and life services organizations shall control the uses made of and permitted on the property described in Section 1. Section 3, that October the 9th, at 6:00 PM is the time and place for the public hearing. Section 4, the city clerk is given notice as required by law. Section 5, if any part of provision or order declared to be unconstitutional by court of conflict jurisdiction, all the parts remain in full force of effect. Section 6, that the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon the surpassing by the city council approval of the mayor as otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Andrus. And a roll call vote, please, Mr. Secrist. Counselor Walden.
Yes, sir.
Geer.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President White.
Yes.
So that is.
The four weeks I've got, the ordinance, I consider the order, I want to make sure the record is clear. The proffer that I read is, is made out of.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we proffered. Thank you.
All right.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Alamon and a second from Ms. Andrus. And another roll call vote, please, Mr. Secrist. Counselor Walden.
Yes, sir.
Geer.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Harden.
Abstain.
President White. Yes. So that is nine to zero to one, and that is an approval and will be ordinance 2878. All right. So with that, we will go back one item to 080923. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone 55 Bagby Drive and 65 Bagby Drive from C5 to MXD. Applicant is also John Chapman and Capital Partners. And we'll start with another report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus.
Yes. The committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
All right. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Mr. Minor, are you starting off again?
Yes, sir. All right. Randall Minor again, 130 Stratford Circle, representing the applicant for this property. And I'm going to let them talk first, but I'll kind of do a recap at the end with some language that we proffered to the city.
Perfect. All right.
Now speaking specifically to the 5565 Bagby mixed-use zoning request, as Jennifer alluded to earlier, the buildings in question here, you know, their fate has long been, I guess, questioned. And, you know, the images kind of speak for themselves. The structures have been abandoned, as best we can tell, for at least 15 years, probably longer. Bell South, I think, was the last occupant in the structures. You know, since we became involved with 75 Bagby, we were before the council, I believe, at the end of 2020, the beginning of 2021. You know, we've had our eyes on the full Bagby and what to do with it, candidly, because we want to support the school. We want the ecosystem and that environment that surrounds the school to be positive and uplifting and be an absolute blessing to the folks who are there day in and day out. And so we've searched long and hard to figure something out. The idea of these structures being placed back in service as offices is just not going to occur. I mean, candidly, that would be the most economically viable solution for things if that were to be the case. But that ship has sailed. And so we've pivoted and we think we've pulled together a plan that speaks to needs of a community that certainly, it certainly exists within our own community and region, but much larger as well. And so our plan, and the reason for being before the council tonight, is for the structures to be redeveloped into a mixed-use facility that would be residential primarily in nature, but also has some other multiple, multiuses that we're going to speak to. But the residential component of the structures would be specific for those 55 and up and for those persons in our community who are living with an intellectual and developmental disability, so an IDD community. Those two participants would be the folks that we would plan to occupy the buildings. Contained within the structures, within the residential units, we will be constructing a new building at grade level that would act as both the entrance to the property as well as house a medical deliverable that would be operated by our operating partner in the Magic City Wellness Center, which is an offshoot of Birmingham AIDS Outreach that Karen Musgrove will speak to in a moment. And then also, our second operating development partner on this would be Triumph Services, who have long operated in our community and are providing great amount of support and uplift for the IDD community that we also are targeting with this redevelopment. So I'm going to let Beth Zions, who is CEO of Triumph Services, speak to that. First, I'd like to ask Gray Plosser to join me at the podium and let him walk us through the development.
Mr. Chapman, let me interrupt you real quick, just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Sure.
Just, and I know I'm being precise with language, but there's a reason for it. So I just want to make sure. There aren't any restrict, you talked about there were some groups that were targeted for this, but there's no restrictions with regard to the residential component with this project, correct?
That's correct. We're before the council tonight, seeking no restrictions.
Perfect.
Certainly.
No, that's.
Poor choice of words has followed me all the days of my life.
One of the first, one of the first things I tell witnesses when I prepare them is lawyers talk different. And so we, no judgment. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay.
I do appreciate that. I do appreciate that because it has been certainly the subject of a lot of discussion. So thank you. Gray Plosser with KPS.
Gray Plosser with KPS Group. And it's our privilege to be working with John on this project, as we have several others previously. The, it's an exciting thing for us. I've been practicing architecture and planning for 50 years. And I've come to think that, for the most part, it's a lot more fun to turn something that has become useless into something useful than it is to start from scratch. It's more challenging and it's more fun, for sure. But our firm has also done planning for most of its history and had the privilege of being associated with Homewood in its land use plan and the preparation of that land use plan. And it's also fun when, you know, a good plan comes together and the things begin to happen that were intended or hoped for in that. I think John made the allusion to what the city is doing. And as a poor citizen, my, I think one of the most important things that any municipal government can do is to be about facilitating and encouraging redevelopment in their community, reinvestment in their community constantly. And you all know of communities who have failed to do that. So my hat's off to you for what you started back then with that land use plan, for putting the public safety facility out there as an anchor. Those things have made it possible for somebody like John to come forward and come up with an idea to reuse those things in a creative and productive way. Productive in terms of taxes and all sorts of things. Well, so the job, and specifically from a design standpoint, is simply taking a couple of old, rather anonymous buildings and turning them into something else. And the truth is, they actually are not too bad for housing. They got long corridors, but those two buildings will ultimately accommodate about 170 multifamily units, predominantly single-bedroom units. There'll be a few two-bedroom ones, but not many. And those will then be focused on a new commons facility in the middle between them, where the bridge is now, which is, I started to say is going to come down. It's already coming down, has been for a while. But that new commons facility is just exactly that. And it's the opportunity to establish a new, fresh image for the facility as well, both for the people that are going to live there, but also for people who pass by. Its impact on the neighborhood will be changed, will be different, just as the school has been. So they're not in and of themselves particularly inviting, but by the time we get through with them, they will be. And they'll be a great place to live. John doesn't like using the phrase, but making a silk purse out of a sow's ear is really what it's all about. And to think that they, that you almost tore them down is to have run the risk of denying that opportunity. So again, my hat's off to you. We're privileged to be involved with it. It's a great bunch of people. They're passionate about what they do. And it's fun to work with somebody who's passionate about what they're doing, particularly at my age. The, I think that the design is an important thing. I'd like to point out a couple of things that are important, I think. Number one, the new commons building, which there was a rendering of somewhere, there it is, right there, is going to be very open and welcoming. Two, the site will be far, will be significantly less impervious material than it is now. In other words, it's all building and blacktop. But this project, because of its reduced density in terms of parking requirements, will allow us to make much more green space and much more landscaping, which we can now figure out how to comply with the city's new landscape ordinance while we're at it. But that's a significant change in the character. Forget the buildings being there, but the changes in the site, and they will present a different image. And all part of, I think, a sort of momentum that's occurring in that whole segment of West Oxmoor, all the way from the street, all the way to the top of the hill. And we're privileged to be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
As I referenced earlier, we have two operating partners with this, on this project. Karen Musgrove, who we've worked with on multiple projects. Again, it started out at the Dewberry 1917 Clinic that I referenced earlier and certainly continued at the Magic City Acceptance and will do so with the expansion of the school. One of Karen's deliverables is that she operates a facility known as the Magic City Wellness Center, which, for layman's terms, is a dock-in-the-box type deliverable. And so her plan for this, and I'll let Karen speak to that, is to bring that concept here to this structure, which, again, will, the mixed use will allow for that. But she'll also have a component of that deliverable that will speak to the geriatric services that, in our opinion, don't currently exist. And so I'd like Karen to maybe address her functions within the building.
Yes. Hello again. So my other John is CEO of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, or also BAO. So we have two nonprofits, the school and then BAO. BAO has been in existence from, since 1985. I know some of y'all know BAO. In 2016, we opened up the Magic City Wellness Center, which basically is just your family medicine providers. And we started off in this really small building. And then we got to expand in 2020 into the Dewberry Building with UAB. So another example of a great partnership. We have two full-time medical MDs, three nurse practitioners, six licensed counselors, and then, of course, our research team. So our goal is basically to take everything that we've learned at the Wellness Center, which is thriving at the Dewberry Building, and move it into this space with a concentration of not only family medicine, but geriatric medicine. So find nurse practitioners who specialize in geriatric medicine. Find mental health providers that thrive inside of this space and creative ways to provide services to this particular community. And so the great thing is, because it's a nonprofit, all the profit and the income that we make from the services that we provide, we're able to put it back into the nonprofit, which is ultimately the school. So it's just this big circle of wonderful ways of how we're supporting each other and supporting the different programs that we're creating. And from, so that's the plan, that's the goal. And so we'll consume part of the new space for, it will not be called the Magic City because we're not in the Magic City. We're in Homewood. So I will think of a clever name for it, but it will be the Wellness Center. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Karen's fantastic, and our relationship has thrived. And so one of the things that she certainly has taught me is that it's all about public health. And really, at the core of all of this, it's kind of this public health piece that just keeps recirculating. To that point, as I began introducing who we are and what we do on the multifamily world that we've been living in for 20 or so years, over the course of operating that firm, we've constantly been introduced to moms, dads, aunts, uncles, grandparents, brothers, sisters, whatever the relationship friend, but who ultimately are caregivers for those persons who have been diagnosed with an intellectual developmental disability. And so it's navigating the housing piece of life with them that has been wildly rewarding, but it's also very challenging. And so we were thrilled to have met Beth and her organization Triumph Services several years ago now. And we're very pleased to be their landlord at their existing facility on Arlington Avenue. And as conversations carried on, it became quickly apparent that the services and the work that Beth's group is doing fit wonderfully with this project. And so I'd like Beth to join me at the mic, and she can speak to Triumph Services and their plan within the building as well.
Beth Zions, Triumph Services. I come to y'all tonight, both as, obviously, the leader of Triumph Services. We work with adults in high school age with developmental and intellectual disabilities. We work with a very small subgroup of these individuals. We work with a subgroup that live independently. For all practical purposes, they're like anyone else. They sometimes need a little help with certain things, so that's where we step in. I also come to you as a parent. I have a 19-year-old that's navigating her way through college as an independent college student. So I come to you as a parent as well as a professional. Housing is a great need for this community for multiple reasons. Number one, a lot of them do need that little bit of extra help, but it's not necessarily the help that you think about. It's not the day-to-day living, or they would not be living on their own. It's not for medical reasons. We don't oversee medication. We don't do anything medical. So if someone is not independently able to live at home for medical reasons, they would not fit the criteria of being a participant of ours and allowing us to serve them. But we help with budgeting. We can help with taking them to the grocery store. A lot of our participants don't drive, so they rely on the bus. The location of this proposed facility, this proposed apartment complex would be fantastic because it's got, it would have a great bus stop, which I think was part of the plan, was to have a very nice bus stop with covered place for them to be out of the rain and all of that. But it would also allow us to serve a larger amount of people in the Birmingham area, as well as statewide. I could see if, I could see an apartment complex like this and where there's services that we can help, where people would be more willing to move to the Birmingham, the greater Birmingham area. the greater Birmingham area. Um, the options now are basically twofold. It's a traditional apartment, which they do well in, but there's a loneliness factor to that. Um, when you talk about the neurodiverse community, um, you know, there's some comfort knowing that they're in a, in an area where they can have people that are like them and that they can relate to. Um, there's also the availability of services in this city. Um, we would love to serve more and more people in this city, but quite frankly, when I have someone working eight hours a day, and they're going from Trussville to spend an hour with one participant, to Mountain Brook, then over to Hoover, I mean, we're able to serve three or four people a day. So obviously, the expense for those services are pretty great because of the time it takes for my staff. So I think to be able to have more individuals that would be able to live independently in an apartment by themselves, but the families have the peace of mind to know that if they wanted to choose to have services, that we could provide services, um, more frequently and obviously at a more cost-effective, um, way, because we would be going to one location. Um, there are also other service providers in the city. Um, you know, obviously, if they had personal services from somewhere else, they could be served there, too. I mean, it's, you know, it's just an apartment complex where it would happen to house, um, a lot of participants that we could help. Um, we also see a great advantage to the over fifty-five population. I really don't like to think of that as aging, because I'm right there. So it's kind of hard for me to say that fifty-five is aging, but, um, it's a great population mix, because, um, there's just a lot of similarities. You know, they all kind of need an extra hand from time to time. Um, but again, this is not like, um, an assisted living facility. We do have participants that move to assisted living facilities. Those are the ones that would have medical issues where they really need that assistance, or, um, you know, significant mobility issues, or safety issues. The population, um, again, that we serve, that would live in these apartments, would be the same people that could live next door to you. Um, it just would be in an environment where there would be a lot of, of help and services for them.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Um, thank you guys for, um, listening to the presentation. So, uh, I got involved about three or four weeks ago, uh, just to kind of walk through some of the, the legal issues associated, and as, uh, Council President Wyatt mentioned, you know, that we're not seeking restrictions as part of the ordinance, um, but we are working, you know, within the constraints of law to kind of develop an operational plan, uh, for this, uh, for this proposed facility. Uh, as, as John mentioned, you know, the heart of this is the Magic City Acceptance Academy. And so what we've tried to do with some language that we proffered, uh, to the city attorney was to make sure that that was front and center in terms of any consideration of this request. But at the end of the day, the, the key here is, this is, they are separate properties, but all of this is in conjunction with expanding and facilitating the Magic City Acceptance Academy. Um, you know, you heard from two of the, the nonprofit service providers, uh, for this, uh, that kind of explains why it's a mixed-use project. That's why the MXD zoning designation, we think, is appropriate, uh, because of the way the buildings are. We're dealing with existing buildings. We're fitting in the space. Um, and so the plan is, you know, as, as has been articulated to you guys, to have a, a, a holistic campus with green space, with the dock-in-the-box, et cetera, that serves the school. But, but it also has uses adjacent there, too, that serve the school as well, right? So, so that's the holistic thing that we've been trying to do. Um, obviously, there might be questions, and so we brought the full team, uh, in case there are questions. Um, and obviously, as you can tell, uh, from, uh, the presentation, we're very passionate about this. This has been something that, obviously, there's a financial return, hopefully, but really, this is, uh, this is really just a labor of love to kind of do the right thing. So happy to answer any questions, um, and we're available.
Thank you. Let me do this. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Come on up.
My ass right there.
You, you did, you did.
Trisha. So, yes, most of you know me. You just figured.
It's like Madonna, right?
JJ, that's your job. But yes, as I said last time, the need is so great, I can't believe it. You know, and as I was sitting there, I started thinking about the participants that I, or the people that I've been my best friends for forty-five years, that have moved to Homewood because they had a place to go. And one of them is right across the street from the park, the Kyles. You know, they've been neighbors of mine my entire life, and Janie now lives on the park. An attorney, Jim, who you know, he has a house in Homewood that he has bought, he was in Mountain Brook, because, and it's the floors where he says, I can have Merrill and his friends on one floor, and maybe a sitter or somebody on the other floor. And so you're watching people move here to be closer to their children, but their children are getting older also. Housing for the mentally challenged population has been the hardest answer whenever a person asks anything to me. They don't care about the dock. Well, they care. I mean, don't quote that. Don't take that minute down. They care about that part of stuff, but they really want to know what's gonna happen now that my people, their children, live forever. You know, is it where you have your brother-in-law live with you twenty-five, thirty years? He didn't get in the body contact, did he? Mike, how long did, how long did John Garrett sleep with you? See? And he could be right down the street. Also, I have just this great idea just now. Do you know what this would do for economic development? Because none of them drive, so they all have to shop in Homewood. Brilliant! Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Not that I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, um, and I'll just say this, and Mr. Minor can correct me if I'm wrong. The, again, there are no restrictions on the residential component. What we're talking about here is that there are services that are adjacent to the residential component, and so when everyone's talking about residences, they're talking about people who would want to live near those, uh, services, um, rather than, but, but anybody can live there.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All right. Uh, any other questions or comments from Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just want to, um, echo Counselor Andrews' comments about the fact that these buildings were basically abandoned. I, I work across the street every day, and so I take a couple of drives up there and just been really impressed and amazed by the vitality that the school has already brought, and the opportunity to complement what's already been established there to further develop these, these buildings and provide needed services and provide opportunities, um, for housing. I think that these are, these are, these are good things for our community. I think it's great for West Homewood, and, um, I thank you for your efforts.
All right. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to bring up a point that, um, was brought up at the Planning Commission, and, um, that we also discussed, um, offline with Beth. Um, and my sons also use the services at Vocational Rehab Services, which is right up the hill. So that is also, um, a facility that they would be using, um, this population would be using, and it's right up the hill. So again, as John pointed out, you're really creating sort of this ecosystem, and, and they can, you know, transport themselves to this place easily from where they're, from this location.
And a lot of our referrals come from ADRS. We help employ, which again, to Trisha's point, we would, we always employ our participants close to where they live. So now there will be a larger pool of individuals that will be employed in the Homewood area, because that's where we would place these individuals in employment.
Okay. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, I just had a quick question about, um, accessibility in, in the units themselves. Um, so, a- and maybe I missed it, but are any of them going to be physically handicap-accessible? I know, kind of geared towards, um, some, uh, an aging population was mentioned originally, but I, I guess I didn't hear a breakdown, but also to tie in. Vo- VoC Rehab's up the hill, but also Children's Rehab Service that does a lot of work with people with wheelchairs and, you know, alternative mobility. So just kind of, uh, th- as that population ages, they tend to go more into VoC Rehab, but still have some of those impairments. Again, I know there's been an emphasis on people with intellectual, um, disabilities, but there's also a different population that I think sometimes has difficulty finding accessible housing, too.
So, uh, handicap accessibility is, is physical handicap accessibility is, is law. So the, the project has to provide facilities in accordance with, with the law. And, uh, and the feds will come get you. Serious stuff. But beyond that, uh, I think we've had discussions, uh, with John. There's a, there's a new concept. It's not that new, but it's been around a while. It's called universal design. And, and it's really about, um, uh, a whole range of, of issues that, in many cases, are small details, um, that make it easier for a broader cross-section of people to live there, or a broader cross-section longer to live there. And so I think it's, it's, uh, uh, there are a number of those things which we've talked about, which we will incorporate into the project, which will, and some of them you'd never notice unless you were, unless you had a particular, uh, issue, physical issue that, uh, that this responded to. But I think, um, uh, the, the idea is that the project will be, uh, will have a number of those characteristics of universal design, which will broaden its capacity to accommodate, um, people with lots of different kinds of physical disabilities, not just the neurological.
Some have to be.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Nothing is ever specialized.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you give us a first reading.
Yes, there's an ordinance to regulate and to amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Homewood, whereas the Planning Commission has favorably recommended that the property described herein be rezoned from its current zoning classification, C-5 General Business District, to the MXD Mixed Use District, zoning district, whereas the council has determined to set a public hearing on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Then therefore, be ordained by the city council as follows. If the property described herein were addressed fifty-five and sixty-five Bagby Drive, with a legal description attached as Exhibit A, be and the same as hereby rezoned from its current zoning classification, C-five, to MXD pursuant to the development plan attached as Exhibit B. Section two, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance by the city council, the restrictions applicable to the MXD zoning district, this ordinance, the final development plan attached Exhibit B, and the proffer made by the applicant, that permitted uses of property shall be limited to facilitating expansion of the adjacent Magic City Acceptance Academy through rehabilitation of two existing vacant office buildings to contain residential apartments, as well as office space for various mental health and life services organizations shall control the uses made of and permitted on the property described in Section one. Section two, that six o'clock on October nineteenth, excuse me, October ninth, is the time and place for the public hearing. Section four, that the city clerk is given notice as required by law for this public hearing. Section five, if any part of provision of ordinance is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all other parts, provisions, or sections of the ordinance not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, approval by the mayor and otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Andrews, and a roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest.
Sir. Counselor Wilkens?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
President White?
Yes, so that is nine to zero to one, and is approved, and will be ordinance twenty-eight seventy-nine, which brings us to the end of our old business agenda, and, yeah, go ahead. You're fine.
I didn't want to be incomplete.
No, no, no. No, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, thank y'all. Um, and brings us to our committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Second, all right. We have a motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's approved ten to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, oh-eight, ten, twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone nineteen oh-six Courtney Drive from C-one to C-two. Uh, the applicant is McConnell White and Terry Realty and Insurance Company to facilitate the proposed redevelopment of the Homewood Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store. This comes to us, uh, from the Planning Commission. Ms. Andrews, that vote on the rezone was eight, was it seven to two?
On the rezone, it was eight to one.
Eight to one.
On the development plan, it was seven to two.
Got it. All right, so that is, was eight to one favorable recommendation. We are going to set that public hearing for November sixth at six P.M. All right, next item, oh-nine, ten, twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve a final development plan for thirty-thirty Independence Drive, thirty-oh-eight Drake Street, nineteen-oh-nine Oxmoor Road, and nineteen-oh-six Courtney Drive from, uh, which the zoning is C-one and C-two, uh, and the applicant is McConnell White and Terry Realty and Insurance Company for the proposed redevelopment of a three-point-two-one acre site centered around the planned construction of a new twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-fifty-foot, square foot, Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store to a new six-thousand-square-foot retail building, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of seven to two favorable recommendation. We will also set that public hearing for November sixth at six P.M. Next item, ten, ten, twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve a final development plan for thirty-thirty Independence Drive, thirty-oh-eight Drake Street, nineteen-oh-nine Oxmoor Road, and nineteen-oh-six Courtney Drive from, uh, which the zoning is C-one and C-two, uh, and the applicant is McConnell White and Terry Realty and Insurance Company for the proposed redevelopment of a three-point-two-one acre site centered around the planned construction of a new twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-fifty-foot, square foot, Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store to a new six-thousand-square-foot retail building, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of seven to two favorable recommendation. We will set that one also for November sixth at six P.M. So get ready for a long night on the sixth. Uh, next item, eleven, ten, twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve an amended development plan at two-oh-two State Farm Parkway. Uh, the applicant is the Homewood Property Outparcel Owner LLC to permit the proposed construction of a new three-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-six-square-foot, single-story urgent care medical center, uh, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of nine to zero favorable recommendation. We will also set that one for the sixth at six P.M. Next item, twelve, ten, twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve the final development plan at five-oh-one Scott Street. Uh, the applicant is Eric Hudson, Eric Hindon, and Hindon Huckstein Architects, P.C., and the owner is Dr. Michael Kilgore, uh, DMV, DVM, excuse me, uh, centered around the interior and exterior renovations of an existing Homewood Animal Hospital that would be expanded in size to three-thousand-five-hundred-eleven square feet to accommodate a combination of office examination and treatment services, as well as expanded parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. That one, we're going to hold off and set that one for, uh, November twenty-seventh at six P.M.
No.
Yeah, well, truthfully, I tried to do, do better than that, but I couldn't, so, so I did what I could. Um, all right, so that gets us to our last item, thirteen, ten, twenty-three, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three through October nine, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, Mr. Jones, is this?
Yield to Mr. Harden?
Yes, um, I did have a chance to go through the vouchers. Um, it's a little scary that, uh, our city clerk and finance chief work on Sundays, but apparently they do, and so I got all the answers to all my questions. So I make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Harden, second in the room, Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's approv- approved ten to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three, one forty-nine. All right, and that's, brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Uh, just so everyone remembers, not that it's going to affect us next week, but just as we look towards the rest of the month, remember that even though we have a fifth Monday... a fifth Monday this month, that we will meet for committees on the thirtieth, and then we will have a council meeting on November sixth. Committees on the thirteenth will take off Thanksgiving week and then have our second council meeting of November on the twenty-seventh. Also, just heads up, for December, we will have committees on the fourth, council on the eleventh, and committees and council on the eighteenth. And then we will obviously take off the week of Christmas and actually, the day of Christmas, which is on a Monday this year. So just be prepared. Obviously, that doesn't affect us for this week. We'll still meet as normal next Monday night. But with that, Mr. Gualtney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will set public safety immediately following finance at five P.M. Besides that, I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Keir?
A quick update from Arts Council. They wanted me to let everybody know that they have two new events planned for early next year. One is they're coordinating with Homewood High School Band to help plan and fund a fundraising event for their trip to Ireland. They're going to be featuring Shaun of the South and Two on a String for a fundraiser at the high school February fourth. And then they've been working with the Senior Center in West Homewood to plan some lunch, lunchtime performances with Dolores Hydock. I think that'll also start early spring or late winter. And then they also have the Drum Circle. And Spring Park was a big hit last year, so they, they intend to have their second annual Drum Circle in the spring. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yes, I just want to give a quick shout-out to Homewood Middle School. They celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month this past week, and it was nice. All the kids got to come out and see each other, and my daughter loved being able to celebrate her culture. So thank you, Homewood Middle.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wolverton?
Honestly, I don't, I don't really have anything special tonight other than to give a shout-out for her first soccer goal last weekend. Our girls have played soccer for seven years together, but she usually plays defense and got to get in there on offense and score. So it was great.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Yes, the beautification board.
Or, no, no public work, sorry.
The beautification board met today, and just wanted to update the council on a couple of things from that meeting. One is glad to see that the Edgewood Historical Marker is back at Broadway in Oxmore. That was kind of a collaborative effort of the environmental, I'm sorry, the Historic Preservation Commission and the Beautification Board to get that back. So it's good to see it. There again, also, the beautification award for the next quarter is going to be presented to the Homewood Police Department. So the board voted on that, so there will be information forthcoming about the placement of that marker. So invite y'all to attend if it, if it works with your schedule. Also, the Decorative Street Sign Project, which is the, not the green signs, but the more decorative black signs that identify the streets throughout the city of Homewood. That is underway. There's a number up now throughout the city, and that was kind of discussed today at the meeting. And that was a project that a number of board members, including Chris Smith, worked on. So it's awesome to see that implementation occurring. Saw where Counselor Smith had posted yesterday or the other day about, about it in honor of Chris, and so definitely wanted to reference that, as it's great to see that happening. And then finally, we were looking ahead to December as far as council dates. There's a number of dates related to the holidays coming up, and I just want to share. One is the Chamber Open Houses on November second. Christmas Parade is on December fifth, from my understanding, and the menorah lighting will be on December eleventh, immediately prior to council from that five to six timeframe. So hopefully, y'all can all attend if your schedules permit. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll, I'll echo also Chris Smith. He was assistant scoutmaster at where I serve in Troop Seventy-Nine, and he did such a good job and ran the tree lot sales for the mountain scouts. So that, that was a big job, and we're still trying to find someone to, to fill the shoes. If you want to volunteer, let me know. But anyway, what a, what a great guy. And that was really his vision, and he called me multiple times about the signs. And so we finally got that moving, and so I'm happy about that. Finance will be at five, and one comment I was just going to make. If you were wondering how we got the Exceptional Foundation here, she was here as an example. When she brought that idea to Homewood many, many years ago, she had that same fire and determination and excitement, and, and it was, it was not an overwhelming vote at the time, but I was so happy that that started many, many years ago. So I'm happy about that. And then I'll just say, Happy Columbus Day. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if anyone has ever seen Tricia without that.
Probably not. Probably not. I haven't.
Ms. Nelms?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
So Barry offered, I'm going to set special issues for Barry, and she offered to go after PND, but looking at my referral agenda, I don't think that makes sense. She's got a very small item that's actually my item on her agenda, so I'm going to go ahead and set special issues.
Do you have a lot on yours?
I do have a lot on mine. I'm trying to figure out how to manage that. I'll have to put that together tomorrow. But, so I'm going to go ahead and set special issues to follow public safety, and then I'm going to go ahead and set PND to follow special issues. So we'll go ahead and give her that spot right after public safety. And I, speaking of the Exceptional Foundation, went with the mayor and President Wyatt and Counselor Smith to, and spouses to Entertainment this year. And it was, I, I mean, it's great every year, but I don't know. It was a ten-year anniversary, and it was like the best of the last ten years. It was unreal. I mean, it was so great. And the artwork was fabulous. I got two pieces that are hanging in my office right now, but the, the special, the fun of the night was watching the money go up on the Golden Retriever painting, and it made it up to six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we just sat there and just, we kept, you know, you could just do the QR code at your table, and we just watched it go up and up and up. We were, we, Keith and I were out after two hundred. It kept going up. So, but I did get two fabulous pieces. And the great thing about that app is, is if you go into the app, you can see who painted it. And so you see a picture of the artist with their painting. It's amazing. And so it just was a fantastic night as usual, but this, this particular night was really wonderful, so.
As long as the Backstreet Boys show up.
Oh, and Prince.
And Prince is good, but the Backstreet Boys are my favorite. All right. Mr. Harden?
The only thing I have other than I have to go to my daughter, I don't, I get to go to my daughter's birthday party in Silicaga tomorrow. It's halfway between Auburn and here. She's turning nineteen, I think. Moms know these things, dads don't. But I also always want to thank my co-counselor. She makes my life easy because she does all the heavy lifting. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have anything tonight other than to thank y'all, everyone, for their work, and we will see everyone in a couple of weeks.